We'll get started. I want to thank everybody for joining us today. We are reconvening into open session after closed session with no reportable action taken. We'll go ahead and get started with the calls to order and roll call.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Councilmember Matina.
Here.
Councilmember Parlet.
Here.
Councilmember Spur.
Present.
And Mayor Turner.
Here.
Before we do our pledge of allegiance, I just would like to welcome two VIPs that are in the audience tonight visiting from the Portland, Oregon area. Retired Lieutenant Colonel Wayne Gearing and retired educator Alejandra Gearing. I am fortunate enough to be their eldest and I'm sure favorite daughter. And I just wanted to say thank you for stopping by and watching our city council meeting. Dad, would you leave us in the pledge?
Thank you all for standing facing the flag, placing your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item is acceptance of the agenda and any urgency items.
Do we have any urgency items?
No, we don't. All right.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Our next item is our consent agenda. These items are expected to be routine and non-controversial and can be approved in a single motion unless a member of the public or one of the council members would like to pull an agenda item. I wanted to make a clarification, Margaret, on E, the application for the Clearlake High School Homecoming Parade. If we missed the homecoming parade part in the title of the agenda, do we need to pull that or is it fine? We're not really approving the high school to be held on Main Street.
I can clarify in a minute.
Okay, good. Then if there are no requests for an item to be pulled, I'll...
Do you want to read that?
Oh, you're right, huh? Sorry. My dad's here. Consent agenda includes way of reading except by title of any ordinances under consideration at this meeting for either introduction or passage. Approve minutes of the city council regular meeting of September 18th, 2018. Approve the warrant register of September 24th, 2018. Confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency in the city of Lakeport. Approve the application 2018-028 with staff recommendations for the 2018 Clearlake High School Homecoming Parade to be held October 12th, 2018 on Main Street. And approve a letter of support for a community planning assistance for wildfire program grant application. If there are no items to be pulled, I'll accept the motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Good. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And approved. Motion carries. Our next item is citizens' input. Any member of the public is welcome to address the council for items that are under the jurisdiction or authority or purview of the city council but are not already on tonight's agenda. Do we have any requests for input? Thank you. First, we have Mr. Bill Graham regarding a speeding car. Mr. Graham, is this a speeding car on 20th Street? Because that's on our agenda.
No, it's not.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Graham. On Monday, I forget what time it was, late morning, on Lake Shore Boulevard, there was a head-on accident right where it joins the lake. I was out there assisting and trying to slow down traffic. It was amazing, the number of people who could see me but could not see the cop cars or the accident. So I was trying to slow down and flag down and who were not slowing down, even with the person always standing on the side of the road. The roads were wet, very slick. The car had spun out going around a 15 mile an hour, 90-degree corner and hit an oncoming car head-on. Over four years ago, I had requested that the bike lanes be painted on this road. They still have not been painted. It's been four years. I don't even think they're existent anymore. But this is, you know, just way too fast and the traffic is leaving the city. It's not coming into the city. We've been there for over 10 years. I've seen at least six accidents, rollovers, once going up over the, where the sidewalk could be. I know this is supposed to be a new pathway to be able to walk around the lake. And only one car was going southbound. All the rest had been going northbound at this intersection.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Thank you.
Next, we have Suzanne Lyons. An update on our walking path.
Hope I didn't break anything. Suzanne Lyons. I'm the chair for the Parks and Rec Commission. I just wanted to let you know that the sign is finally up in Library Park. It looks very nice there. It shows the beginning of the walking path. I did want to say that Suzanne Russell did make a donation to Parks and Rec Commission and that paid for the pad that's... Spitting is my grandma. Paid for the pad that's out there, the new little bench that's been set by the library is part of it. It's a white bench. It's not the same kind of thing, but I actually donated that bench. It would be nice if we got the little planters there. It's supposed to have some sort of a planter. And when we were up in Oregon, we saw one town had taken conduits that are twisted metal and set them on their end and done little planters. They looked really, really nice and they're probably very economical and they're not a big planner to try to take care of. But it looks like that little bench could use a little planter there. It would be nice and we were supposed to have planters. We do have enough money left in our budget to go ahead and put the other two benches in, so I would love it if we could get those ordered and get them set because the money's there. One of the things that I think you should be updated on is we just had our meeting canceled again. We've only had three meetings this year. And when we talked to you, I know at the beginning of the year when we changed things up, we said, "The problem with getting anything done is we don't meet." One of the things, I believe it's in our bylaws, is that we're supposed to meet the first Thursday of the month. For years, we weren't doing that. It was in the bylaws, but we were meeting the third Thursday. I think that works better because staff is so busy, right? This weekend, they have so many things going on. For them to meet on Thursday and try to do our commission is probably difficult. So I would like to bring that back to you after we have a meeting, which I hope we will next month, and maybe look at those bylaws and bring back something to say it might be better if we met on a different day, just so that we could actually get work done. Because I think the path is going to be something really nice and it does tie in with the fact that there's this whole idea of doing the walking bicycling. Oh, yes, and if we could get our lanes back, our bike lanes, that would be really good. You're the third or fourth mayor since we requested this. So it would be nice if it finally happened. But anyway, I think it's good to be able to say this is something that we've already accomplished. We're looking at trying to get funding to say we're a walkable town, that we've already started on it and that it's something that kind of connected to...
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Suzanne.
Our final request for citizens' input is Spencer Johnson regarding fire board appointments.
Good evening. My name is Spencer Johnson. I've worked with the Lakeport Fire Department as a firefighter and paramedic. But tonight, I'm here as a concerned citizen of Lakeport. As you're well aware, Lakeport Fire's four directors and fire chief recently made the decision to reduce fire department staffing by 50 percent, bringing the number of people on per day from four to two. That means only one fire engine, one a boat at any given time, needing any additional support from the different fire districts that are already strapped. Not only does this pose a great safety issue for the people in this town, but it also doubles the workload for the employees working. The reasoning behind layoffs is to balance the budget. Thoughts of many are that these cuts are unnecessary and could have been prevented if action had been taken sooner. The first mention of the budget issues were last October in the fire board meeting minutes, but only recently brought to the public as well as eight staff as well. The county board supervisors is filling one of the current fire board vacancies on the 16th. It has come to my attention that the terms of the remaining four board members are up at the end of this year. It has been mentioned that the way the board members have been selected in the past is that the city council selects two for recommendation, the county board supervisor selects two, and then the current fire board selects one. I'm here tonight to urge you to help us get new people on the fire board, whether it is one or two of you from the city council or if it is members from the public. Both the fire department and Lakeport need people that keep better track of the department's finances so that we can get our staffing back and that we can keep our community safe. The current board members have been there a very long time and nothing against them. I think they've just gone complacent and let things slip by like... Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is to introduce new employees, Anthony Lennott and Alex Sharp.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's my pleasure to introduce a couple of new members to our team. The first one I'd like to introduce is Ms. Alex Sharp. She is completing a fellowship with Civic Spark and she's going to be a member of our team for 11 months. Civic Spark specializes in capacity building, volunteer engagement, professional development. And so she's going to be assisting with I&amp;I. There's a lot of work to be done, so she's going to be assisting with laying out spreadsheets, investigation, all that good stuff, and looking at trends, establishing a baseline. She's also going to be doing some capacity assessments and so we're excited to have her on. She'll be with us for 11 months. And she, a native of Mississippi, she recently graduated from Auburn University with a bachelor's degree in environmental science. And this, Alex comes with Civic Spark and she's actually funded through Hinge, the partners where it could be installed on our solar.
Cool.
So welcome out.
Welcome out. Welcome out.
And then next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Kevin Lennott. He joins our team as utility operator. He brings several years of experience with working with a local pumping contractor. And so he's, we're excited to get him on board. He's anxious to get the books and get his certifications going and he's been a great asset so far, so I'd like to welcome him to the team.
Yay. Awesome. Our next item is to present a proclamation designating the month of October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Lakeport. Two representatives of Lake Family Resource Center, Lisa and a bunch of advocates are here. This is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Lakeport, designating the month of October 2018 as domestic, excuse me, Violence Awareness Month in the city of Lakeport. Whereas domestic violence impacts women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds... Pardon me. And whereas emotional and physical scars resulting from domestic violence are often severe and long-lasting. And whereas in the past 12 months, Lake County law enforcement responded to over 547 incidents of domestic violence, including men, women, and children. In the past 12 months, the Victim Witness Division of the District Attorney's Office has served 234 victims of domestic violence. And the District Attorney's Office has prosecuted 51 felonies and 160 misdemeanor acts of domestic violence. Lake Family Resource Center responded to 407 crisis line calls, served victims, and additionally sheltered 171 domestic violence victims and their children for a total of 6,047 bed nights. The emphasis is mine because these numbers are still staggering. Whereas it is crucially important to hold perpetrators responsible for assault and to prevent domestic violence at every opportunity. And whereas family violence is a community problem, stopping the cycle requires not only the strength and courage of survivors, but also the support and involvement of all members of the community. And whereas many organizations such as the District Attorney's Office, Sheriff's Office, Lakeport Police Department, Clearlake Police Department, and Lake Family Resource Center are committed to ending domestic violence in Lake County and provide essential crisis intervention and prevention services to all members of our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lakeport City Council does hereby designate the month of October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Lakeport, and our community is urged to support the efforts of the agencies assisting victims of domestic violence and to increase their involvement in efforts to prevent domestic violence, thereby strengthening our community and creating an environment which honors, nurtures, and protects all members of every family. Thank you. Thank you. Very much appreciated. Thank you. Turn it over to Sherri. Sherri's our victim services program director. She'll tell you a whole lot more than I think.
We direct you to the council. I would just like to say that anyone can be a victim of domestic violence. Statistics do show that one out of four will be affected by domestic violence, which means there are survivors in this room, people who might have helped a survivor or known somebody in a domestic violence situation. Currently, we have over one dozen people staying at our emergency shelter and we have over 100 active outreach clients. I would like to give great recognition to our staff and our partners who provide the 24/7 services that allow a survivor to become empowered to heal and move on with their safe lives. So on behalf of Lake Family Resource Center, I would like to thank the city of Lakeport for proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next item is to adopt the proposed ordinance amending Chapter 3.05 to the Lakeport Municipal Code to take advantage of the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Before you, an amendment to Chapter 3.05 of the municipal code, updating the UPCCA Act, which we opted into, I believe it was a year ago. The program basically provides options to leeway in execution of public works projects, speeds up the work process, expedites project delivery, reduces the time, effort, and expense associated with bidding small projects, and simplifies administration. The amendment to the code is actually increasing the thresholds. I believe the previous thresholds were 45,000 for a small project, which is being increased to 60. Under 200,000 may let, can opt into a contract by informal procedures and then over 200,000, which was previously 175,000, should undergo the formal bidding procedure. So we just need all the public hearing and adopt the ordinance.
Thank you. Does council have any further questions? No. Well, we're looking at public input. Is there anyone who'd like to address this item? I'm opening the public hearing. Anybody care to participate in our public hearing? Seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. Bring it back to the council for action.
There's no further discussion. I would move to adopt the proposed ordinance amending Chapter 3.05 to the Lakeport Municipal Code to take advantage of the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is to receive an update on speeding, speed surveys, and traffic control measures on 20th Street between Alden Avenue and Hartley Streets.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before you is a staff report regarding the update on speeding, speed surveys, and traffic control measures on 20th Street. Much of the information you're going to see in the staff report probably looks familiar to you. It's been brought to your attention previously, but I do want to include in there things that we have done since this began in 2016. We continue to do education through Facebook and as recent as April, we addressed on Facebook citations that were issued on 20th Street, as well as reemphasized the 85th percentile speed and where we're really trying to go with that. We have also been very aggressive in our law enforcement activities in the area. As you know, there was more data collected in March of this year and, which still indicated the 85th percentile, that 37 mile per hour speed zone. We aggressively dealt with that in the area from a patrol standpoint. We put officers out there. We've been very diligent on being visual, visible in the area, as well as enforcement. We have written several citations and we continue to be in the area. And even as of, between April 6th and September, we wrote a total of seven citations just for speeding in that specific area of 20th Street. We also put our radar trailer out there as an educational tool so that motorists driving up the street could actually see very large visible indicators of their speed as it related to the posted speed zone on that street. And we've continued to do proactive activity in the intersection of 20th and Hartley. As indicated in the staff report here, we wrote a total of 58 citations from that time period to current in that intersection. Majority of those may not have been speed per se on 20th Street, but they are certainly something that is a factor in determining would-be speeders. This time, there have been a couple of things that hampered our ability to be in there. Of course, the floods happened right in 2017 when this first got started. It kind of hurt us a little bit on being out there and of course the fires as well. In addition to that, we're dealing sometimes with one patrol officer, much like we are today, where his focus has to go on other areas of the city as well, other traffic enforcement, as well as calls for service. So at this time, the deployment of the radar trailer, more education, and increased enforcement is planned for that area prior to any further speed zone survey.
Thank you. Council have any questions?
What was the original survey? What was the speed? I can't remember what the speed was. Was it 37?
The 85th percentile was 80, sorry, 36.
Now it's 37.
Went up.
It went up because our speed limit went up. I mean, I'm not saying it went up, but I'm just saying it was 25, it was 30, and then they said it was 36, so we raised the speed limit to 30.
Well, I mean, do we even have speed limits lined up?
That was a requirement from the engineering study, is that those 30 mile an hour speed limits.
So they say 30 miles an hour, right?
Right. And our radar trailer also does. There was signage on there and so that you can see what the posted speed limit is versus what your speed is on the output. So yes, in essence, Councilmember Spur is correct. It did increase a little bit as of the March data study. Again, that we're trying to be out there as visible as we can be, as proactive we can be. I think we've received quite a few compliments for being more visible in the area from citizens that live there. I personally have, I know the chief has, and Officer Walter, who's one of our most active officers out there, has also received compliments for being out there, being visible in the area and taking a proactive approach to the problem.
And did we find out that these people that are speeding are the ones that actually live in that neighborhood?
So that's a good question. It's something I can certainly find out. I'm going to do a little bit more research because the way the data is provided to us, it doesn't actually provide in our computer system where I get the numbers where the person's actual address is. It just says where the stop is. I can do a little bit more research. I got to go individual ticket to ticket, but I can get that information.
Well, just knowing which direction they're traveling would be helpful regardless of where they're actually living.
Yeah, but I was thinking, I mean, they have to have a driver's license number that will give them an address, maybe, I don't know.
I will have the address. It'd be whatever they provide to us, either from a driver's license or they verbally tell us, will be on the actual citation itself, which the system is only providing me the data that shows where the stop was made and the speed in excess. But I can get the citation, provide that information to you.
I was just curious.
It seems to me that the people that have been traveling that for, you know, maybe as many as decades, they know the width of the street and what we did was traffic narrowing perceptions and actually the road is as wide as it's ever been and they know how wide it is. And as our consultant has said, over time, that when it's a wide street, people feel free to drive at a higher speed because they feel safe. And all the narrowing things would probably work great on people that are moving into the neighborhood for the first time, but the people who've been living there for decades or even as much as 10 years would know that the road is still very wide despite the lines and the dots and everything like that. They know it's wide and they know it's safe to travel at speed and then they cause the problems at 36 or 37 miles per hour. But you've done everything you can and Doug's crew's done everything you can, spent sizable amount of money, and obviously this is going to take a little bit more effort and more education and more outreach.
Well, I remember the first time I saw a speed study and finding it just so shocking that that's how speed limits are set, by how fast people are traveling. And then found it even more shocking when this little neighborhood comes in at 36 miles an hour. I thought for sure we'd be successful at finding a way to slow people down, do a new speed study and maybe get that down to 25 or keep it at 30. So it's just totally disappointing, but everyone's speeding around town and I'm afraid if we did another speed survey, it'd be at 39 miles an hour. So thank you for all the hard work. The street looks beautiful with the narrow lanes, but I think that we tried everything.
Yep, thanks for the work.
We'll continue to do it.
So if council has no further questions, we'll open it up for public input. Is there anyone who would care to address this item?
Everyone on 20th Street's embarrassed that they're all speeding. Just kidding. They all came out in force and that's why we tried to do something. It's too bad.
I agree that... So we'll bring it back to the council then for discussion. I agree with Lieutenant that it is not time for another study yet, but I do appreciate the continued enforcement and the presence out there. It doesn't seem to be doing an overall difference. I wish personally that we could just park you right on the street as we do another study. That would be great, but...
Or do a trench across the road or something.
Trench. Speed bump.
Yeah, construction going on.
Stoplight.
Traffic. Yeah, put a flagman out there one wing only.
Is there any further discussion for the council? I don't think we need to take any action on this other than just to receive the report. Thank you, Lieutenant. concludes the agenda items. We'll finish with city council communications. Margaret?
I will be attending the annual conference of the California Local
I would be attending the annual conference of the California Association of Local Agency Formation Commission this week in Yosemite, where there'll be an interesting presentation by our local executive officer on the consolidation of water districts up in the Cobb area after the fires. So we'll talk about that as I'm there.
Lieutenant? Oh, sorry.
Nothing to report. Nothing to report.
I totally skipped Nick. Sorry, Nick.
Nothing to report.
Sorry about that.
All right.
And Kevin, did you say nothing?
Not yet. Just real quickly, I know Doug's not here. I knew there were a couple of public comments today on lines, you know, not being faded and such. We are in the process right now with our H-SIP grant that we got a year and a half ago or so. We're finally able to get those new lines down on the street. I don't know if folks have seen 11th South Main, looked really good this past weekend. I was out at the soccer fields and that area's looking good. So I know the rains probably hindered them from getting too much done these past two days, but that is underway. That does include all of our Terryown Collector Roads, which includes Lake Shore, Hartley, some of our more major roads, so that should be done here. I don't think it's supposed to take that long. It's a two or three day thing. There's one crew that does all the straight lines and then another one comes back and does all the special characters, arrows, stop legends, crosswalks, and things like that.
Thank you. Kelly?
No report.
Council member Spur?
No report.
Council member Parlay?
Well, one of the questions I was going to ask Doug was whether or not the striping grant was going to take care of this three-mayor problem that we've had with the bike lanes. I know that on 11th Street, those things are beautiful out there and I know that when we were having problems out of West Side Community Park, there was some problems and Doug said, "Hey, we're waiting for the H-SIP grant to get, you know, activated." And so I suspect that there's a good chance that maybe along Lake Shore, those may be taken care of.
That's correct, yes.
The other thing that I wanted to report was Kevin and I attended the ABA last week and Tina was there as well. And the new police chief down in Clear Lake is working to try and put together a program. We all on the committee decided that we didn't want to give free rein to people that were dropping RVs and boats and so forth because there were so little consequences built into the California Vehicle Code and there was only so much you could do. And so we're looking for an administrative citation pathway. And he is all fired up. He's the new guy on the block and he's putting together some protocols and doing all of the Lake work for Lake County and the city of Lakeport, so we're looking forward to that. He's thinking that that might come forward in, he said, a couple of months. So that's something exciting. We don't have a lot of problems here, but we, he believes, as most of us do, that you shouldn't get a free pass because you just dumped a vehicle and it's only 100 bucks and he's trying to find out administrative citations and other ways to go after these people. I think that's very important. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that with everything going on and that rainstorm and everything, that we want to still remember that the Canokdi Challenge is coming up this weekend, one of the best outreach projects that we have for tourists. We have people come from all over the country and state and it's a wonderful project. And we also have the Oktoberfest, so we want to put, get Lakeport to put their best foot forward and do all the great hospitality and big smiles and get the, what is it, the CTAs out there doing their job. But I think it could be a good weekend. It looks like the weather's going to be a lot better than it has been the last couple of days, although the rain is welcome, so look forward to a fun weekend.
Thank you. Council member Medina?
Just looking forward to the event. No report.
Tom?
No report.
All right. I'll just finish with an invite to also enjoy Oktoberfest, which takes place the same day as the Canokdi Challenge. And just to give a shout out to Clear Lake High School's homecoming parade, which we just approved, it's going to be Friday, October 12th, and they're going to go from 9th Street all the way to Martin Street along Main Street at 4:00 PM. That's always different, and that's fun. And that will conclude our meeting. Thank you so much for joining us.